Good evening, everyone. The meeting is called to order. Just the planning board's regular meeting and first of all, we have six members present, so John, I will designate you a voting member tonight. Henry is excused tonight, so that will make seven. I also want to welcome back Bill. We haven't seen Bill for a while and he is back with us. Obviously, as a full-time member.
248 miles.
We have one item on the regular agenda tonight, and that is the marijuana establishment license, and I'm sorry, you'll have to, I don't want to mispronounce your name. Bereney?
Yeah.
So this is an application that for a medical marijuana caregiver retail store license. And it falls within the purview of both Reedfield's marijuana establishment license ordinance and also the land use ordinance. So just to refresh everyone's memory, both of those ordinances and the standards under each are relevant here. And Mr. Bereney has addressed both of the sets of standards in his application. The process is that the planning board considers.
One quick comment. There was a misprint on here, which
On where? On
On first page number two, it says cannabis dispensary.
First page of the application?
Kind of more application.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm gonna talk about the dispensary issue. I'm glad you caught that as well because we need to make sure that that's clear. So the process is for the planning board to consider the applications under those two ordinances and to make a decision. If the planning board approves those applications, we would forward those to the select board. And that's a bit of a different process that's established in the marijuana ordinance. So the select board does a final review and approval on those types of licenses. So that is where we're going after we finish with it. I want to also remind everyone that in order to license any marijuana establishment, municipalities have to specifically opt in for different types of facilities. And in Reedfield, principally, the town opted in for medical marijuana licenses and not across the board for recreational. And so in this particular case, what we're looking at is the medical marijuana registered caregiver retail store. And the town did not opt in through town vote for the recreational aspects of the marijuana establishment. We can talk about this a bit after. The rules in the law are rather complicated on the state level, and there may be some questions that come up about that. But I think that, you know, between Mr. Bereney and several of us, we can probably work through those. Okay. One that I would mention right off the top is that Reedfield's ordinance calls for the approval of a marijuana establishment license by the state before the town can take action. And I believe that that is a piece in our ordinance that needs to be corrected. That is true of recreational facilities, which this is not. And for a caregiver retail store of this type, the town would go through its process. And then ultimately, if we approved it, the code enforcement officer would, there's a form that would be submitted to the Office of Marijuana Policy. And stating that the town has approved a facility, and then they connect with the applicant on that. So it's rather complicated, but I point that out because the ordinance specifically talks about town approval prior to state, and in this particular case, that's not accurate.
The ordinance says state first and the town.
State first and then town.
What we need though is the town first before the state.
For this type of facility. Okay, well, with that, our process is that we like to hear from the applicant. If you could come up and summarize the application, what you're proposing to do, and how you believe you comply with the standards, that would be helpful. And then planning board members, they have some questions for you. Please welcome.
My name is Frank Bereney. My daughter is Helen Beach, and this is actually a caregiver retail store that will be, it will be her store. I will be operating, I will run it. Give you a little background myself, I currently own five stores. I already have another one for the state, so I have a caregiver retail store myself, plus I have five other dispensaries. I've never had a violation, I've never had problems, P, I've never had in all my years doing this or bars or whatever, I've got good reputations in all the towns. I'd recommend you visit and find out how we operate. Our stores know that we comply with all state, federal, local guidelines, give all the unnecessary permits, et cetera. My daughter, this is her first thing, she's been working for me. But I will be doing all the operations, and I'm very familiar with all these processes. Basically, it's like she just said, very simple, it's a caregiver retail store. There's no cultivating, no manufacturing, very almost no odor whatsoever because we're not producing anything there. None of that stuff there, it's just simply a retail store. The difference between carriers and dispensaries, dispensaries are actually held to a lot higher standard. As far as the state goes, you got to have better security measures, they expect for annually. They make sure you have like cameras recording for a certain period of time. Carriers are actually not required for that by state. This store will have all that, though. We have camera systems completely coverage the whole entire property inside and out. We have a bar that's installed by APT that has direct link to fire and police and kitchens and anything. We always have two people on staff at all times for obviously security measures. We also have panic buttons, I don't know if you're familiar with those are, but if there's any issues that these guys have a button that goes directly to the state, you know, to the police department. Not sure how it works out here because you guys don't have a local police department, it'd be over the sheriff's, I imagine. As far as products, all the products are purchased through licensed caregivers as they're required by state. You can't buy from anybody who hasn't been approved as a carrier to sell what do you call it, cannabis products. That's pretty much it. As far as, like you pointed out, what I understand according to Mr. Stevens and the attorneys who were doing zoning, or, you know, implying there was a previous cannabis shop there, don't know the situation with that. But yeah, that's pretty much all I'm gonna say. Do you have any questions?
I did have a question for you about, you know, as I said, I've looked several times at the state law and the regulations, and they're very convoluted. One thing I did note, however, as you point out, there is a distinct difference between a dispensary and a caregiver retail shop. And Reedfield opted in for caregiver shops, but not for dispensaries. There are several places in the application where it still references dispensaries.
We, if I typed in dispensary, it was just a term. This is certainly caregiver. Like I follow the trend there, while it says all across the state, people refer to all the stores as dispensaries. It's kind of a same thing. This is not an actual technically dispensary. Even though 9% of the stores you see out there that say dispensary, they're not, they're caregiver retails. This is not a dispensary. If you're a person, I don't mean a term dispensary as opposed to what your, goes on. In most cities, to be honest with you, you don't distinguish. So I kind of slipped that in, like you said, I do these all the time. And we've always, I just, it's by habit I would refer to that as dispensary. But it's not a dispensary. We didn't even have that dispensary application. I'll fill that one in.
And a question I had for you, because I'm curious and I'm not sure I understand this completely, but as I was looking at the state statute and the rules, it talks about being able to operate only one caregiver store, whereas you can operate multiple dispensaries, but only one caregiver store. So the rest of your stores are in fact dispensaries, and this is your one caregiver?
No, that's what I was saying. The reason why originally when I, when we contacted the town, we were under the assumption that, and I believe the code on some time was a trade, that you guys allowed actual dispensary for a caregiver. 90% of the towns I dealt with, as a matter of fact, this is the first time I dealt with it, I'm dealing with, I think nine others right now, that distinguish. They allow medical, they usually don't care. Most towns want the dispensary because they're a lot harder to see it, and a lot of your volunteers in the cannabis are with the caregivers because they're a lot more relaxed. For example, they inspect caregiver stores like once every two to four years. They inspect a dispensary every year. They come and check the paperwork. With the caregiver stores, it's so infrequent that it gives you a lot of room for problems. They don't require the recording systems and all that that they do in dispensaries. Now, my store, my caregiver store is in Waterville. The reason why, when I found out I've already purchased the property, assuming that I was allowed to do, not assuming, we contacted them, we thought, oh, dispensary here. And then we found out that you guys did not allow dispensary. So at that point, I contacted the state, contacted companies, contacted Stevens, and we decided to have cattle. I also own Extraction Labs, I own kitchens, I actually make a lot of our product. We're actually, though, we're probably largest medical unit right now, my company, Marijuana. And so we decided to do, I was talking about opening one for her anyway, we decided the best route was this will be her store. I'm gonna wholesale my product, just like I do other stores. I wholesale all across the state. Well, not as much anymore because I have too many stores, but yes, so this will be a caregiver under cattle, and she's qualified. And like I said, my caregivers are Waterville. I have other ones that are dispensaries, and but I will be doing, I will be the manager as far as the state goes, the point of contact. I've actually had an inspection with OCP yesterday, yeah, yesterday. And I went over to them, what you're doing here, let them know exactly what's going on. We're very upfront about how we do things, and if anybody has any questions.
Could I ask, again, this is maybe just curiosity, but I bet the distinction. So in a retail caregiver establishment, patients come in with prescriptions, or how does that?
In the state of Maine, the medical program, there's no difference between a dispensary and a caregiver as far as the patients go. They come into a store and they have to present the same information. What they need is a medical marijuana card that they get from a licensed nurse practitioner or doctor, whoever's issued, and they come under your state ID to make sure that's who they are. So in order to come into a caregiver store and purchase anything, you need to have the the medical marijuana card. Well, actually, we take out state cards too. So if you came from certain states that are approved, you can also purchase it.
Now, what makes a dispensary different from a retail caregiver store?
The way it operates as far as the public, there is no distinction. You can come to a registered caregiver store or a registered dispensary. The difference, as she pointed out with dispensaries, you can open multiple dispensaries in Maine, but you can only have one caregiver store. Honestly, I don't understand why. I think it's something that because it's been there so long that they just are keeping the caregiver part. Originally, in the state of Maine, there was only eight dispensaries allowed. And then about four years ago, they opened up so that anybody can do it. That's when you saw that big explosion in stores. That allows you to open multiple stores. Up until then, you can only have your caregiver store, or if you had a significant other, you both can have one and operate it pretty much together. But again, the big distinction is on the administrative end where dispensaries are they're held to a lot higher standard than the state. You see what I'm saying? Like when they come into inspection, they'll come with a caregiver store, like, oh, you need that? Oh, you're not a dispensary, you're not a dispensary, you don't need like have, for example, you have to have chains, and you have to blockage in certain areas you don't, there's certain records that you have to keep, you don't with. I'm not familiar with all of it, but.
My understanding from talking to OCP, I think last year, when you first came came in with an application, I had a long conversation with them, and my understanding was that, I don't remember all the specific distinctions, but one thing I do remember is that the, I guess, the volumes, the quantities of marijuana that you can handle in a caregiver facility are different than in a dispensary.
Yes, no, not any, the store, the retail end, no. What you're talking about, that's the big distinction. The big distinction is more on the cultivating side. So cultivating and manufacturing, you're limited to what you can grow. So if you're a caregiver, let's just say you're a caregiver, you can only grow 30 mature plants. Or a KIP, I think it's five hundred square feet, okay? If you're a dispensary, unlimited, thousands of plants, whatever you want. But again, it's also held to a lot higher standard. When you do it in medical, because I'm looking at all the because of what down the stores, the volume of plant I'm getting to. They, you have to submit to the state a detailed plan. You have to have that alarm, that camera, that, the amount they require you to do an actual growing facility with a dispensary is a lot higher than a caregiver. But in a caregiver, you can't grow as much. So those are the distinctions that they're talking about. As far as the volume of a caregiver store or a care dispensary, there are no differences whatsoever that I'm aware of, and and my Waterville store is probably my business store, and that's my caregiver store.
I think a number of those standards that you just mentioned, like, you know, cameras and security and so forth, have been built into Reedfield's ordinance specifically, and I think those are drawn probably from the dispensary standards on this.
I think it should be, yeah.
Yeah, and so I think the Reedfield ordinance is probably a bit more stringent for caregivers than some of the others might be in other towns for that reason.
Yes, and I, most of the towns are leaning towards that they don't have, they are putting a lot of, like I just had a we gotta do a lot of, I just had an inspection in Newport today for my occupancy permit. And I mean, they're in there, same thing, they actually require a 45-day backup under camera system where the statement requires two weeks. The funny thing is, our camera systems have come more and played with law enforcement. We've had two accidents, not my store, but in the street, that our cameras picked up. The guy across the street had somebody had an accident in his thing, and they picked it up. God, maybe there was an accident outside. But they require, they require, most of the towns require a long reporting from the state. In Newport, they require a lot, even having a lot of the province. We do it anyways, so.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had a quick question. You said for a caregiver, they require a medical marijuana card. It's kind of curious, a question for me. A dispensary, they require a card as well. If somebody wants to buy recreational marijuana, they require a card. So you always need medical?
Yeah, we're medical, you have to have a medical card.
But for any marijuana, like any marijuana store?
Not recreational, recreational is, you have to be 21-plus, you come in with an ID. It doesn't matter what state you're from, anybody can purchase.
So is a dispensary classified as recreational, or is it?
No, that's the thing, is you have medical dispensaries, and you have recreational dispensaries.
Okay.
And interestingly, there are two separate bodies of law. There's one statute that deals with medical and one statute that deals with recreation.
And then a dispensary is really one, I mean, according to law, is one of the group.
Well, you have dispensary, okay.
I don't know, I mean.
No, no, I love these, I mean, I have these talks all the time. You could have just a grow dispensary and not have a retail dispensary. You could have a manufacturing dispensary where you make oils and kitchen edibles and not do any of the others either. So if I was going to get a dispensary license for a store, I can also get a different license for manufacturing, a different license for, you know, cultivating, all that stuff.
Yeah, I think the spirit of our ordinance is two caregivers in Reedfield, and that's it, right?
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, that was just changed last year, so this would be the second one, so we're.
And I'm not cultivating at all, so.
In our marijuana ordinance, it requires that you comply with our land use ordinance with respect to lighting and signage.
Yeah.
And I was curious if you could, if you thought about what you're doing for lighting and signage, if you could show us at the next meeting, what's the signage and lighting will be.
I had spoken to, Frank had hired somebody to look into that, take care of all the technical things and legal things, so I've been in contact early in the last two weeks. He has the proposal from that person, so he's ready for that tonight.
Lighting and signage are both.
Right, so, so the lighting is what I understand, if you're talking about the light for the sign or lighting for the building?
Both.
Which one would you like?
Both.
What I understand, not exactly, again, I'm not the contractor. But as far as the lighting on the building goes, it's what's in, I put it in the package there. We have regular, normal outside lighting type thing. It's not, it's not blasting towards the road, just pointed down, whatever you call that, what do you call that? I'm not, to be honest, like I said, I'm not exactly sure, because it's, until now, I haven't heard anything about the lighting. But we have, because the building's completely lit, most towns, they worry about that you don't have enough lighting on the building because it's, you know, that. So we have two lights in the front, two lights on the side, there are normal flood, why call it floodlights? Where do you call those? Those half light, like I said, the three quarter cutoffs, is that what they're called? Does anybody know? I'm pretty sure they're with your code.
They restrict spillage of light.
Is that?
They restrict spillage of light into neighbors and into the street.
As far as the sign goes, yes, I have the sign, the sign company out of Stetson, Maine does the signs for all my buildings. They reach out with Mr. Stevens, and they find out what codes and what you guys allow, and then they make a plan to go forward to compliance and stuff. And I'm understanding is you have a 25 square foot signage, if that's correct. You're on one sign, that's that side.
Because you're within 35 mile an hour.
There, what they, they're asking is there's an existing, I know you have no interior illumination, it's got to be exterior. And then you do have guidelines for the type of lighting, which I know he's been talking to the sign company, whatever that is, I'm fine with doing whatever your code says. They're proposing if we could use that existing sign, different illumination. There's a sign there right now, if that's acceptable or not.
The old gas station pole sign.
It's been there, it's been there. What I try to do is try to keep the integrity of the town, because most towns want to keep the store well, you know, preserve as much as you can. If that's not okay, we can do another sign. That's probably the easiest for everybody. They would externally live it, obviously, with their compliance with their code.
I assume that the, you have two different contractors, one for lighting and one for signage?
No, the sign people, they take care of everything. They do my signs that are just the wood on the board, they also do the big ones that are, they're doing an offer, it's like 30 feet wide. So they do, they do all kinds of sign. They do the electronic sign, they do.
Because our primary interest is in making sure that both the lighting and the signs comply with our performance standards in the LWO. And so if they're using those as guidance, then they'll be fine.
And I provided her with the exact guidance, the ordinance, and she seems to have done a good job. My question was, height of the sign, the old Texaco sign or whatever it was, and it's under 25 feet, so that's a key there. So most of those signs are supposed to be removed after two months or two years of non-use. That's still been there, so it's, it seems like a good plan.
If we could have that as part of the file, skips.
Right.
The lighting and signage.
One other substantive question I have for you, in several places in the application, it just talked about how things would either be the same or not, not more or different than what was there previously. And I just want to make sure that it's, you know, that it's clear that because these particular types of licenses are not transferable, each time we look at one, we're really, you know, starting from scratch. I mean, your application really has no relationship to the activity that took place there previously. I, you know, I think most of the information is here, but one question I did have was about traffic. And I think the response to the traffic question was something along those lines, that it wasn't going to be any more than what was here before. And I think that, you know, for our purposes, we'd just like to have some kind of a statement about, you know, what that is, you know? How many vehicles do you expect, and can your parking lot accommodate them? I'm sure it can. But just so that we have whatever the information is that's specific to your proposal.
So like, an estimate, obviously can't be exact, because you don't know exactly at any given time, but an estimate, how many parking spaces do you have in that lot?
If I, it's funny, we just, I just talked about a guy who does my diaphragm at the other stores. I think he came up with, I don't know, void parking just in front of your lawn, he had moved like 13 yards. Which, and that's comfortable with the handicap, and we, I mean, you never have more than three or four people in the store at a time, that absolute.
If you could, you know, put together just a piece that you could include with your application that addresses that, it would be very helpful.
If you'd like, also, I can actually submit a parking diner, like, that would help.
I remember when it was, when that building was used as a convenience store, there would sometimes be as many as 12 cars parked.
Was that long ago?
Right, it was done.
Rather chaotically, but it was done.
If I may, for you and for the board, we did have a rather tragic incident just a few doors down earlier this year, someone got hit crossing the street. So I think it's important, maybe, that the signage encourage people to pull into that parking lot. Second point I might have is, I think the last door, we know the last door had issues with the railroad company and other trucks pulling in there to the point where there was almost no parking, so that's something else that you have to figure out how to manage. So you do have, if you could put that together for the next session, how you can handle these challenges, I think would be very helpful.
So as far as the railroad goes, if I'm correct, there's nothing, they have no right to eat or income on that. So that's a very simple fix, the letters from the attorney saying, you're not allowed to use a parking space.
Different.
Yeah, in a friendly way, but they did give an answer. They jumped, a bunch of rock in the middle of the driveway. No letter, me, or nothing, we just dropped there, so. But also, I don't want to I want to make sense, I kind of want to formally understand the toll community use that, once and why. I think they're taking advantage of it. As far as traffic count going by, to be honest, I highly doubt it's going to affect any extra flow compared to what's going there now. The typical store does, you know, 30, 40 people, maybe 50 people a day, you know, I don't think that's going to.
Whatever those numbers are, you know, we just provide those, and, you know, we're our bottom line interest is just in making sure that, you know, any new business or proposal is going to be able to handle traffic safely now.
The question back to talking about the, when you're talking about the signage coming in or to eliminate that possible problem from, do you have any suggestions? Trying to think of, because obviously, signing is signage, you know, I mean.
Well, suggestions, you've got some professionals to pay a big bucks to.
Well, I mean, you can.
And they can run it by me.
You don't want to head and out type of thing, or, I mean.
We like, we like to keep it, I believe, I won't speak for the board, traditional. It's been a popular corner store, it's been a bunch of things, so. The more you can keep it simple, stupid, but still think of a unique way to keep it from running into the problems we're talking about.
Chip, the historical society doesn't have parking in front of a building, right? What they use is a parking across the street, is that?
They had, they had some parking, but he liked parking across the street, and that's just a it was a real tragedy, but the problem there is, and I've looked at every time I drive down there, every day, is that when you're coming from Manchester, there's a dip there. And you're immediately caught by that railroad, you know, railroad sign. I had it ten times, and I don't see anything until I see the railroad tracks. If you look yourself, you see the same thing. So I think that would encourage you to maybe make something that makes it more obvious, but not too like, just suggestion.
Does the historical society ever use his parking?
That's, you know, stuff happens. He also has the furniture store between the two, also.
Oh, that's true.
Other questions?
Is a septic system used by more than that building?
Yes.
It's used by the garage and the other building?
Yes.
And it's not now functioning?
And it's allowed until it fails.
You've got, they're putting two apartments upstairs. Is that what, what was the former use? Was it one stair or two apartments?
Is that, I'm sorry.
Was that the former use?
Yes, yes.
Two apartments?
Yes. We acquired, we got a new one.
They were in rather horrible shape, very challenging tenants. Frank came and he took care of most of that. I still, you might want to tell him your plan for the tenants upstairs, but.
Yeah, basically.
I'm still, he's still, I'm due, he needs to have an inspection for his CO, but I'm sure it's going to be better than it was.
Yeah, we're just, we're finishing upstairs. Matter of fact, all we've pretty much done, things we talked about, obviously, the smell detectors and the carbon dioxide.
Wiring. Wiring.
We got electricians over, we go, they, you'll see, they go, they're still, it's a, a moonshine, but, they're, they're updated. All licensed guys, you know, we're actually eliminating the, um, the gas stoves, I have my gas stoves in two neighbors, they're electric, uh, you know, regular electric stoves up there, it's just safer. Besides that, it's pretty much cosmetic work.
Other questions, plenty of members?
Did we decide where the sign's gonna be, is it gonna be on the building, or is it gonna be in the pole, or?
Um, that wasn't decided, um, they're gonna come back with a more detailed, uh, more detailed information.
You, I can, I can tell you, they have, they, they wanna remove the existing signage on the pole, will be the pole, install a new sign that's under the twenty-five square feet guidelines, external, uh, external lighting, watch the face of the sign, pole sign only, no building sign. Um, and with the, the lighting with the standards, that's your code. So also maybe, also maybe something for that, as far as parking, too, a lot of activated iron, it's plenty of parking in the house, so they can see how that, because there's two entrances and parking.
Okay, great.
I actually don't think we should use the lot over by the train tracks, but there's, I don't know, there's two ways to know that, I don't know, you require that at all, but I think it's safe to keep the lot away from the train track.
Limiting the curb cuts is always a proper direction. Limiting the curb cuts.
Yeah, so we just have the one coming in and out, I think it's three, I think it's wide enough for both of them, and that would be, it's just a park straight, that's our diner. But now that you said that, I think that's, well.
Keep the school buses out, too.
What's that?
So keep the school buses out, too.
Uh, good people, I've got a lot of people sitting in the parking lot all the time, which. I like that.
Hey, other questions, anybody?
Just curious, are there any gas tanks taken out of there, now, or they have been moved?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, stated it.
Yeah. I'd be surprised if they didn't sell that. I think I remember that being on.
Stayed on it.
I think he couldn't sell the place without removing it.
I was gonna say, I just bought a place in Lewis, and I removed the gas tanks in twenty, if you have that, then I'm.
Between him and Mr. Violet, they've done a spectacular job cleaning up that.
Yeah, let's see.
That place back, it was horrible.
Okay, if there aren't any additional questions, um, uh, what we're looking at tonight is just completeness, uh, whether or not the board believes your application is complete. And, uh, so I would, uh, ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to find the application complete. Schedule a public hearing, notify that it's waiting for site visit. Condition, that's gearing on this mirror of the lighting signage and traffic information.
One second. Discussion. All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Oh, there you are.
Your suggestion as to the date.
Um, our next scheduled regular meeting is the twenty-eighth. I'm assuming that we could do both manitoma and this application, um, at that meeting.
I strongly suggest a site visit right before meeting, this is, this should be seen. Site visit at the, um.
Well, Jack just moved to, to waive the site visit because everybody's pretty familiar with that property and thing. And if anyone feels a need to take another look at it, you, you certainly know where it is, and you could swing by and look at it, but is there something in particular, Chip, you think people?
Well, I think this is something, this is something that the board can puff their chest out with, I mean, what's happened to this store between the former marijuana place and this marijuana place, and what it was, it was a drug den, it was a slump, it was a disaster in back. And a lot's been done there, a lot you could be very proud of, you know, having allowed this and, you know, following the way through. Uh, the upstairs was a horror show.
So, so.
So, I mean, I think. I, I would disagree with that, I think it's something that, you know, understand it better, what's going on, this is one that I, I would suggest.
So, yeah, but the places that told, like, it looked good, like, the floor, I mean, you see it. When you walked in before, it was all crazy wires, it was, it was a mess, it's, it's nice.
So, um, the board voted to find your application complete, which means they can move on to the next step, which is a public hearing. And, um, often, we do not have interested parties, members of the public, who speak at public hearings, often we do, so it's, you know, you never can tell um, uh, who might attend the meeting and have comments to make, so. Uh, what we're talking about is the date that we could do that, and I think that we'll probably be able to put it on the agenda for our next meeting, which is the twenty-eighth. And, yeah, I think that makes sense, we would do this one first, and then we have another application that we take out, um, second, too. That's a good suggestion.
Anytime, I'll get back right after you guys.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Good job, we had a good one.
Thank you very much.
See, you didn't have to talk to them.
I'm reading things tonight. Okay, uh, we have a set of minutes from the tenth of December, and I know Peter, um, late this afternoon, you.
Yeah, I woke up, I woke up in rhythm. I think, I think I basically forgot to read emails for several weeks, start of the winter.
Oh, it's Christmas, Peter.
I'm not sure why.
And I, I agree with the, uh, the comments that, that Peter made, and I have one additional thing I wanted to put out there, um, it, it's more a matter of form than anything, at the beginning, where it says public meeting, um, I think we need to indicate that we usually put what the project is. And so I, I think it's in the application, it's called the Fairgrounds, uh, Community Park Project. So that should be identified. And then I would suggest, beginning, uh, rather than just continuation, say the board continued discussion of questions and issues raised at the November twelfth public hearing. Anyone else have comments on the minutes? As much, I don't know if you, um, some of you probably didn't see Peter's because they came this afternoon, but, um, do you want Peter to summarize those for you? No, no, everybody says no.
I wasn't trying to change any of the substance, I was just trying to clarify what, sort of what happened. Also didn't wanna get hung up with the twenty-five year, I took out the specific rivers, the twenty-five year flood plain versus a hundred year.
Yeah. That one was tough, I was like, I'm. Yeah, I, I think your language clarified things. Um, oh, I'm sorry, I did have one more thing, uh, you didn't comment on the, uh, the pesticide policy.
I did, I rephrased it.
Okay.
Um, but I didn't, but I, I saw, I mean, I remembered it the same way Angelica wrote it, but the way, so the sentence proposed is the board discussed the possibility of drafting a policy, regulating the use of pesticides on town-owned land for future guidance.
Okay, my, my recollection was, and actually this is on my to-do list soon, my shortlist, uh, my recollection was that we had agreed that the planning board would send the select board a letter recommending that they consider a pesticide policy for town-owned properties. Does anybody else remember that?
It sounds like.
Yeah.
I do, I do remember that, Paula.
Yeah, yeah, so rather than actually drafting the policy, we were going to recommend that they look into that.
Was it, was it just pesticide, or was it also fertilizer and all that stuff, too?
It all falls on it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's everything down, yeah.
Yeah, I think it all falls on the pesticides. I think you can use pesticide.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think it all falls. But if you get a license to apply pesticide, you can apply herbicides, fungicides, whatever else.
Okay, um, anything else? Is there a motion? Seconding one?
Second, second.
Moved and seconded discussion? All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Okay, um, the only, uh, the only other thing, um, I thought it would be a good idea for us just to spend, um, a, a few minutes, um, kind of touching bases on the ordinance revision project, um, I think most of the drafts are in, um, I think everyone has provided their drafts, um, except for Henry, and I did hear from him, and he's working on that, and said he would have it out to everyone soon, he's working on the solar ordinance piece. Uh, but I think everything else is in, uh, oh, in the piece, uh, the other piece, I think, Peter, you and Henry were gonna look at the C I D, so you're waiting for Henry.
I sent a draft to Henry, and my question is, I guess I didn't copy anybody else, but I did, that was, um, so what I, I could retrieve that draft and circulate it, I mean, I, I didn't, I was thinking Henry might or might not adopt it, and I haven't heard back from him.
Well, I don't know, I don't know exactly when, he did say he was working on the solar piece, and he'd have it to us soon, I'm not sure when that'll be. Maybe it would be a good idea, people can get a head start on it, if you wanna circulate it, and if Henry has input, you know, we'll certainly, you know, we'll we'll talk about that, and he can provide it when he's ready.
Was this language specific to solar installations?
No, no.
General, general.
General.
Was broader.
It was procedural, I mean, uh, no, um, that was the, Henry was gonna work on the question of whether, right, the duplication between the solar ordinance and the C I D, but, no, I drafted something about the procedures for getting through the C I D a little quicker, the process a little quicker.
Chip?
Uh, do we have any direction, or thought of, uh, harmonizing our ordinance with the, uh, the, the plan, uh, in, is this an overlay, or is it not an overlay, I think that's important? But will that be brought up and thought about?
Well, we can, we can talk about that, um, like I told you the other day, um, it never really had been talked about as an overlay until that process, until the comp plan process kicked in, and then a few people started calling it a, you know, an overlay. Floating district and an overlay, and, um, practically speaking, I'm not sure if it makes a whole lot of difference, I think it's clear that the standards of the underlying district, um, are still, you know, in effect, but, but, yeah, I mean, we can talk about that when we get to that piece.
Talking about synchronizing that with the comprehensive plan and.
Right, because the comprehensive plan calls it an overlay district, and when we met on the solar project, uh, it came up, and it was made clear that they still have to leave the underlying, uh, or, you know, district and its, uh, prerequisites, so in essence, it's an overlay, but, you know, it's up to you.
I mean, you know, I think we could make it clear, which it probably isn't right now.
Very thoughtful, to putting everything, I don't know if we do this, not because of the, for the information, but, so just like a, a drive, where we could put all these documents all in place, because I've just got a bunch of emails, with various versions of different things that have been changed, and
Yeah.
Just be nice to, to know that we're all just kinda collaborating on all these and greatest and final, that's stored in one place, and I, I don't know if we can use the G drive or not.
You know, we, we attempted, uh, that during the, the comp plan process. There was an attempt to do something like that, and people were really frustrated with it.
Okay.
Is my recollection, I can't remember all the details, I don't remember, you know, what it was specifically, but it, it was for the purpose of doing what you're suggesting.
You know, Peter would have a problem with that.
I would? Why?
I think they use Google Docs, which is totally.
No, you don't, you can still use Google Drive and use whatever, you don't have to use Google Docs, it'd be used Google Drive, so you can still store.
Yeah, uh, I, I wish I could remember what the issues were, but I remember, Angelica, you got some.
Would that be an issue, because it could be considered a meeting?
No, I, I don't think so, I don't think there's, that's the, I think it's a technical problem, not a legal problem.
Okay, yeah, um, I don't know if it would help, but I could have like a working copy, and then with the reception, and everybody was happy with that, I could update that working copy at that time, or either redistribute or, or whatever, but.
That would help, I don't, I don't think it does exactly what David's thinking.
Right.
You know, I contributed to the problem, too, you know, I'm sending it up to everybody.
Yeah.
Oh, you were copying it, this is maybe the only thing I did on that, I told them, I think, to go back.
Oh, um, yeah, yeah, I remember that, so there's nothing, nothing different, no.
Nothing new from me.
Yeah, okay.
But I never heard that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I've kind of been holding off, thinking that, you know, we'll be talking about these as a group, and so I haven't been providing feedback, because I've been receiving things, just thinking that we wanna talk all together about them, and it might be, it might be easier rather than, you know, sharing individual thoughts on, on first drafts.
Paul, for prioritizing the, the agenda for the next meetings, the, the work that I did in responding to all the different questions that came from the comprehensive plan, I don't think there's a deadline on that.
No, there isn't, and thank you, thank you for that, Dana.
So that doesn't need to be discussed in a couple of videos.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was thinking that, you know, we could talk about that and try to come up with, you know, some idea of a plan of how we'll tackle the comp plan piece.
Yeah.
And, um, I didn't see in there any specific recommendation for land use ordinance change, you didn't put anything forward like that, no.
Nothing, no, it was just more of things that I thought that we'd want to address next year, like, you know, not anything that, because everything that you put on the agenda is in person for this year, things that need to be changed.
Yeah, and my, my initial thought was that some of those short-term, I had those things that were labeled short-term in the comp plan, might be things that we wanted to include in land use ordinance revisions, but I hadn't looked at it carefully. So if you don't think there's anything there that falls in that category, then we can, you know, use what you did as kind of a starting point for our discussion about comp plan issues moving forward. Um.
Can I ask Don a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Don, and I think you did this one, on Article Three, donations. And you crossed out something that's in our ordinance now, I was just wondering why.
It, it looked to me like that was based on floor area, and if we switch to using footprint, the base is not gonna change the footprint, but it would change floor area, or could it? So it seemed to me like. So it seemed to me like if we go ahead and make the other change, you know, which I would talk, well, I cheered Colin Clark's comments, but it does seem like the simpler way to go, to use footprint instead of floor. If we choose to go that way, then it seemed like that section wouldn't be needed.
I see it out here now.
And Don, under that approach, you measure height from grade up. So that's the reason why you wouldn't consider the.
We don't, we already use height in our ordinance, and there's really no change to height being proposed here. So that's all the same.
But I understood, I read what you said. Yeah, I interpreted to me that if we went that way, then rather the size of the basement would be irrelevant, or at least not part of the measurement.
Sure, that was my take.
You know, I, I think we need to have, you know, a complete conversation about all of this as a group at our workshop meeting. But a basic question for you is, I, it's still not clear to me if we must make this change, and why we would make the change. It seems like we need to be able to, I'm not sure what we're accomplishing. So why would we make this change?
And that's why I forwarded Colin's email, because he explained why the state needs to change.
But the state, I mean, there was no recent change.
No, it was, the chapter 1000 was in 2015.
I mean, it was almost 10 years ago. And in the interim, they've approved our ordinance because we've revised it.
Yeah, so we're not required to change. It's just a question, would we like to have something that's simpler language?
He also thought it was simpler to use footprint because he thinks, he understands that we use the 30% rule, which we don't use.
We don't calculate volume.
So, so yeah, you can look at that and say, yeah, I mean, that's, but that's where to start.
Okay.
I was going to briefly brought this up, Colin, thank you for following through. When I spoke to him and asked him questions, he made a very good case that you could do either one, but there had been legal challenges from the kind of people that we've dealt with, that if, you know, we denied something under our floor area, that they could come back and say that the state rules and the court could duplicate efforts and make a decision on which way to go. We thought it was just simpler to harmonize the state and us, recognizing that ours was, okay, it worked, but you could get into legal. And they had gotten into legal issues with people challenging the towns that.
Yeah, but what he pointed out specifically was the variability in how towns and individuals calculate volume.
Right.
But we don't do that, because as Jack pointed out, we don't use that 30% rule. So we don't calculate volume, and so we don't have that pitfall to watch out for.
And again, I'll come back to that challenge. People come in, try to, you know, use anything they can. And if the state has something, it gives them a foothold, an ability to go to the courts and say that this is a better way, the state's approved. I mean.
But that hasn't happened. Okay, well, for discussion.
And Don, one of the, you only found one place where they mentioned privacy, or was it more than one?
There was only the one place that I was aware of where we required an approval from the privacy ownership group for.
Oh, as opposed to consulting? I think there's like two or three places.
There are other places where they, it talks about review. But that, that was the, I, my understanding was that I was asked to live with that specific section where we require approval of five of the districts.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a workshop meeting next Tuesday. And I wanted to see if there was any interest in starting earlier than 6:30. Yeah, we can, we can do it later than 5:30, so you can. But what, you know, whatever you think, it just seemed like, you know, if we started a little earlier, we could, you know, we could set an end point for the meeting. We could do, we could do six to eight, or 5:30. Doesn't make a great deal of difference to me, but. What's that?
Anything works for me.
Okay. Others, what's your pleasure? What works?
Let's do 5:30. 5:30 to 8:00, and there's a lot of work to be done.
There is? Does 5:30 work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's say, let's say 5:30 to 8:00. We'll see what we get done. We have another workshop scheduled for the 4th of February. That's an off Tuesday. And.
I'll probably miss that one, because I mentioned.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it may be that we can, we can get most of this done, you know. We'll have two and a half hours next week. We can see what we can get done. There may be some redrafting to do and so forth, but we'll see where we are. And I suspect we'll need the additional workshop for one reason or another. But let's just see where we are at the end of next week, and we can, we can figure that out. Okay, so 5:30 on the 21st.
5:30 on the 21st?
Correct, that is next Tuesday night. We have a regular meeting scheduled on the 28th, which is the Tuesday after that. And we'll be doing both the marijuana establishment license that we just found complete, and also the Manitoma application.
I put everything together in one package, but I did get a call from Mark Benkey.
Yeah, and you and I had talked about notifying them, the interested parties, so that they.
And he'll be sending a addition to the package tomorrow or the next day.
Okay, all right. So, so they need to, interested parties need to be notified that we'll be taking it off on the 28th.
Right, and there was a folder put in everybody's mailbox on the way I came, I want to check your mailbox.
And you sent all of that, you sent that response electronically?
I did, but I also put a printed copy in my mailbox.
So if anyone doesn't have it, so my understanding is everyone should have it electronically, and there's a hard copy in the mailbox.
If you don't, let me know, send it out again.
And then, as I just mentioned, another workshop tentatively scheduled for the 4th of February. And then the next regular meeting in February would be on the 11th. So that's the next five weeks. So finally, you know, in terms of the L U O revisions, we need to work to come to agreement on concepts, come to agreement on final language. When we have that final draft of the language, we need to schedule a public hearing that the planning board would hold. We need to then revise the drafts, if necessary, as appropriate. And then whatever that final, final draft, following the public hearing looks like, that is what we've ordered the select board. And that has to happen in March, before the end of March. And the legal review, yeah, that needs to be worked in there as well. And I had a conversation with Kristen Collins, a town attorney, about that. So she's expecting a package of revisions. And I did have her take a first look at the piece that I did on the running with the land issue. So she's looked at, done an initial look at that. She had a couple of minor comments, but she's expecting the rest of it. So she'll, she'll pick that up whenever we get ready to send it to her. So, everybody, good with that? Any questions or discussion about that?
Paula, can you hear me?
I can.
I don't know if you saw, but in, there was a string of emails that Don had forwarded to everybody about our discussions that are primarily Don's discussion with Colin, the fellow with.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
And he had, he had suggested in one of them that he would be willing to review what we were proposing, at least with respect to the shoreline zoning pieces of it. So I don't know whether, you know, you were, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, and whether or not we want to do that and let him review stuff or not, I don't know.
I mean, ultimately, he will review it, because if we make any changes, D E P needs to approve those. I would, I guess I would question whether or not we would get anything back from him in a timely fashion if we, you know, to him, you know, at this point, and ask for a review. My guess is no, but.
No, I think.
Probably true.
We've got the tension, and I think if we let him know what the schedule is, I think we would probably.
Okay. All right. But wouldn't hurt to try, I guess.
Yeah, but I assume we need to wait till we have the conversation and.
Yeah, yeah.
So I could, I could certainly write him now and just say, you know, we'll, we'll get back to him at the right time, I don't know the schedule.
Okay. Okay, thanks, John.
Sure.
Anything else, Chip?
Two minor things. At what point in this process are we to post this on the website, the L U O changes? Are we going to post a work in progress, or are we going to wait to a certain point?
We, my immediate reaction is that when we have a draft that we're all in agreement should be posted for public hearing, that's what goes up.
Second thing is, is we had a gentleman from Manitoma point out that we have slight numbering error in our land use ordinance, which will be changed just by changing one number. So it should be changed, it's in section eight. It goes from section eight to six to seven. But that's going to get fixed, though. I probably will let you know or send out the edited versions of the land use ordinance sometime this week.
Okay, anything else, anybody? Thanks, we're adjourned.
The Manitoma, they're being judged on.
It's true, same for the property, it's going to be a lot of trouble. That was the last.
I don't think there is a change that's going to affect. Yeah. I. I don't think something exists in that effect. I don't know if any of them.
We don't use the D O N.
Who knows? Okay.
When you set up your initial, something else, I ate all that. You set up our name too. So just when you do it, you set up.
Yeah. Telehealth says it, and I had to talk to some, some of the doctor's office, they scheduled it. Man helps it into a portal. You have to go to a portal, you have to Google it. I don't have to use Google, but I don't have to stay on portal. So, so I tried it, they sent me a text. Oh, click on here, I clicked here, it's in server area. Finally, I called them, that was a technical assistance number, and they told me what to do.
That's, yeah, you didn't have to do that.
Well, my wife would help, she's in the movement, she gets impatient with it.
Yeah, yes. Yep, they all take that, that wasn't the only.
It's all this paraphernalia here.
Oh, that's all the. That's how we can.
What is that?
Oh, I don't know what that thing is, I don't.
So.
Don't move it, it's fine with that.